I'd call a meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees to order for July of 2016, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and I have roll call and recognition of visitors.
This evening's visitors include Dick Carter and Roberta Eva Slage.
I want to also acknowledge Erin Rhodes, who is a student at the college and will be the editor of the campus ledger this fall, welcome to the first of several meetings that you will enjoy thoroughly.[82.22][82.22](laughter) The next item on the agenda is our open forum session, the open forum is a time during each board meeting where folks can address the board, comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people intend to speak, in which case the chair has the opportunity to limit those comments out of time recognition. In order to be recognized, individuals must sign in at the door before the meeting, and when addressing the board, registered speakers should be respectful and civil, should not talk about personnel matters regarding individuals within the college. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel issues or matters that are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion processes or are otherwise a subject of review by the college or the board. Today we have one registered speaker, Chris Russell?
Rossell.
Rossell, a student here who's going to talk about voter registration. Come on up, Chris, thank you for being here again.
Good afternoon, Chairman Musial, members of the board, President Sobchitz, administrators, faculty, staff, students, other community members. My name is Chris Rossell. I'm a student here, I was a student senator, I'm no longer a student senator, I'm a club officer. I have a concern and I have a proposal. The concern is that we've got a low rate of voter registration among students. The proposal is to offer voter registration forms at student ID issuance. The reason for that is student ID issuance is the one place that all students have to go through. I've timed out and costed out this proposal. It conceivably costs the college as much as $200 a year to offer to all registering students, when they get their student IDs, the opportunity to register to vote. Now, there are a few positives for the college. If the students actually register and actually participate in the election, conceivably you could interpret it as achieving six of your eight student learning outcomes, that wouldn't be bad. It would also increase the registration and voting of a body of people who were supportive of the college's budget, who were supportive of the college's activity, students, and once they're alumni. So, these simple activities are what I'm proposing. Now, why would we go to that rather than what we're currently doing? What are we currently doing, or what is a college currently doing? It's sending out an email, and thankfully I was able to have some input into the email, but even so, everyone that I've talked to is reasonably convinced that the email is ineffective. It sends out an email twice a year to all students registered in the college, offering them the links to register to vote, to get an advance ballot, et cetera. The thought is, probably what students do is they see it, see the email, and hit trash, and don't even read it. That's a problem, so they aren't registering to vote. This solution would offer the face-to-face opportunity, the student comes up to get his student ID, and one says, "Are you registered to vote? Would you like to register? Here's a form. Follow the instructions very carefully and thoroughly. If you need help, I can help you." Thank you very much. And it'd be done, at least for every entering student. So, once again, the proposal is a simple one. It doesn't cost much in time and material, all it is, is to offer student voter registration forms at the student ID issuance points on campus, there are only two of them, to all students, and eventually everybody in the college will have personally been offered a student voter registration form. Are there any questions?
Didn't appear to be any questions. I know that Randy Weber is working with you on this and the administration on how to, what is the right path for us to take, and I appreciate the fact that you brought this to our attention twice now. I'll be asking, trustee Cross.
Mr. Rossell, how did you arrive at the amount of $200 per year?
The, I costed out from my printer, black and white printer, how much it costs to print one page of registration form, and that was two cents. I estimated that there would be 1,000 students a year that would need to register to vote. That would be $20 a year in forms. I cost, I timed out how long it takes to ask the simple questions, it was seven seconds. So, I multiplied that times the 1,000 students, I got 7,000 divided by 60, by 60, multiplied it times $40 per hour, you get the picture. Now, I did put in an additional cost factor of the students who don't need, pardon me, who don't need the registration form, and that was two or three seconds, and it comes up right at $200 a year.
Well, thank you for that.
My honor.
Dr. Sobchitz. Chris, if a student does not want to register to vote, they have the right to refuse to register.
Oh, of course. Yeah, it's everyone's choice, it's just, why not offer the right that our founding fathers fought and died for to every student?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There are no other registered speakers, so we'll move on to awards and recognitions. Dr. Korp.
Yes, I am going to turn the podium over first to Karen Martley, who is our vice president of Continuing Education, and she will present this first award.
Well, it's my pleasure tonight to present an award to at least one of our staff members that's here tonight as part of the Kansas Adult Education Association, and this is an organization in the state that provides leadership, it provides networking and professional development for staff who work in adult education. Each year they have a conference in Wichita, and Paula, you want to go ahead and come up? They have a conference in Wichita where they award six staff members across the state with awards. This year, two of the JCCC staff members received awards. The first one went to Paula McLaughlin, probably no Paula, she's worked here for 26 years, and she is an administrative assistant in the Olathe Center, where she was awarded the Distinguished Service Award, and this is for outstanding service in promoting and developing or implementing adult education in the state of Kansas. So, congratulations, Paula.
I'm very humbled that Janice Blansett, my director, nominated me, I'm honored to have been selected, and I'm grateful for the attention that it brings to our Johnson County Adult Education Program, our ABEGED ESL program. It's service and it's what we do every day.
Probably all seen Paula, if you've attended a GED graduation or been at the Olathe Center, she's always got a big smile and usually has a student there with her. Our second award winner couldn't be here tonight, it's Janet Daly, and she's our lead adult basic education GED instructor at our West Park Center, and she was presented with the Master Educator of the Year Award, which I'd like to also mention, she received in 2005, so she's been honored before for this prestigious award, so congratulations to her as well.
For the next award, I would like to ask John Clayton, who is our Executive Director of Institutional Effectiveness, to come to the podium, and he will talk a little bit about this one and present this award.
Natalie and group, whoever I invited, please come on up.[654.73][654.73](laughter) Well, they're making their way up here. The Kansas Board of Regents has an award that they give out every year to two community colleges, or, yeah, two colleges, right? Okay, thank you. Two colleges from the state of Kansas, based upon the quality of the data, the accuracy, the timeliness of submitting for all of the compliance and accountability reports that are submitted. The IR staff kind of coordinates most of that, Natalie and her group, but there is a village truly to make this happen. And so, we extended the invitation, I'm going to read off some of the names here, if you would step forward and be recognized. Natalie Alaman Byers is the Director of IR, Mark Gordon is a research analyst in the office, Lawanda Hughes could not be here tonight, she's also a researcher in the IR office, Gina Brewer is in the IR office, and Cheryl Shaw, Cheryl makes sure we all stay on task and make sure all the paperwork gets done. Also, we invited Valerie Dorsey, Pete Belk, Gail Callahan, Crystal Williams, Amy Martin, Chris Beck, and then also, Clarissa is also a very key person in helping us make sure we get all of our reports done on time. A little bit about what the, how much data is actually collected and sent in, there are over 25 accountability reports that are submitted to KBOR every year, or to the federal government, and of that, there are over a half a million records that are sent in with those reports. That is a lot of data to make sure that it's submitted on a timely and accurate nature. So, this is a huge award for this group, I appreciate all their hard work, it's such an honor to get to join them and be part of the team here, and also wanted to mention the IT team, they also play a big part in helping us make sure that we're able to meet our deadlines, so.
Thank you, and congratulations, we really appreciate what you do. IR stands for?
Institutional Research, sorry.
Thank you.[798.44][798.44](laughter) You did mention Kansas Board of Regents before you said KBOR, so, very much appreciate what you guys do, congratulations. The next item on the agenda is our award-winning government affairs college lobbyist, Dick Carter. Tell us what's going on, Mr. Carter.
I wasn't sure where you were going with that.[847.32][847.32](laughter) Well, it's been a quiet week in Lake Wobegon. No, it has been a quiet week in Topeka, however, and really the only noise that we hear right now are the campaigns that are going on across the state, and I'm not going to talk about those today, you can read the news and the blogs and the social media posts, and you can see ads on TV and listen to them on the radio and read the postcards that arrive in your mailbox. That is the activity that is presently underway. We have a primary coming up in a week or so, and folks are in the, at the end of their trail, at least as far as the primary race is concerned, and working hard to take care of their duties there. We will have a couple of interim hearings, not related to education or budget, the first week of August, and I'll talk a little bit about those in a minute, but generally during the season when we have elections and campaigns, there are far fewer interim committees that will meet during the course of the summer and the fall months. The Legislative Coordinating Council did meet earlier in July to confirm which interim committees will be meeting. There are a couple that we'll be watching very closely on behalf of the college, one is the Capers Committee that will meet, they only have one day of meetings, and so that one will be easy to follow. The one that begins to take a little more time and certainly demands our attention is the Legislative Budget Committee, and they have seven approved meeting days that they will undertake. Typically, their meetings don't occur until later on in the fall, and in particular, as we get closer to the coming legislative session in January. That will all depend also on what the revenues look like for the state. And here we are nearing the end of July, the first month in the new fiscal year for the state, we really don't have a good idea of what that looks like moving forward, we know what the history has shown over the past couple of years. July is typically not a month where we see a lot of revenues streaming into the state's coffers, and in fact, it's usually in the middle of June or so, towards the end of June, when the State Finance Council will issue a certificate of bonded indebtedness to help the state cash, have cash on hand to pay its bills, until revenues start coming in later on in the fall and as things approach in the new year. I would point out that that is one of the certificates that was issued recently, is one of the largest that the state has ever seen, it's in excess of $900 million, and that should be, continue to be concerning for folks, that we're borrowing just to pay our bills as we move through the budgeting process. The legislature did meet for a special session towards the end of June, they passed a bill that the court found appropriate or suitable for equitable funding. The court will take up hearing arguments later on in September on the adequate funding piece of the K-12 school finance formula. Again, I report this because a lot of this drives what goes on during the legislative process when we're in Topeka from January to May. That hearing is set for June 20, rather, September 21, and it's doubtful that the court will issue an opinion prior to the general election on November 8. It comes as no surprise that there are five justices up for retention, I've talked about this at reports before, that will be an election piece to watch, there will be an effort to unseat at least four of those justices, or not retain them, and certainly, things like the school finance decision comes into play specifically for a campaign like that. The other piece that I'll add, just because it's in our own backyard and because we've been a supportive piece of the Johnson County Research Triangle, the sale of the Kansas Bioscience Authority assets has begun its initial transition, the property has been transitioned to the Department of Commerce, which is the first necessary step to sell the assets and the property. The interesting thing that I want to point out is that all throughout the budgeting process, the number of around 25 million was quoted as being the number necessary for making budget matters work. It was interesting to hear in a news story the other day, the Secretary of Commerce indicates that we need to find out where we think the value is on the KBA. The takeaway was not necessarily that it was worth more than 25 million, that would it be worth 25 million, so I just offer that as another concern as we work to continue to see how revenues come in and make the state budget work. I would just stop there, again, like I said, it's been a quiet summer, everything is about the campaigns and about the election, and certainly would see if there's any questions, would also remind you to, I don't think it's a problem for anybody sitting around the table, but I know that it's very important that folks be reminded that August 2 is the primary in Kansas, and hopefully folks get out and vote.
Questions, trustee Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I don't really have a question, I just wanted to reiterate that if people are tired of getting the postcards in their mail, or they're tired of getting phone calls, there's a really easy way to get rid of those, and that's to go vote now. You can vote in advance at six different locations across the county, you can request a mail ballot and get that ballot turned in, as soon as you do either of those things, all of the candidates take you off their list. They don't want to talk to you if you've already voted, they don't want to spend time and energy and money on you, right? So, that's the easiest way to empty out the mailbox, and is to go vote today, tomorrow, you can't vote today anymore, tomorrow. Thanks.
Good advice. Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Carter, are there any other races this fall, either in August, I guess, which is summer or fall that are up?
There's no statewide races, it's all state legislative races, so all Senate and all House members are running, the judicial retention seats will be in November, I'm trying to think if there's other, there's other local.
Are there any school board races?
No.
County commissioners?
There is one statewide school board race, I believe, I don't think it's everywhere, but there, I think there's one, at least in the Shawnee County area.
The Department of Education's an independent executive agency, right?
They are, yes.
Yes.
They have their own governing board and.
I know one person running for a state school board position, so I was just, I defer to Ms. Sharp or you, asking if there's other positions up across the state, if other independent executive agencies that perhaps could listen to the Supreme Court are up for election this fall.
None are coming immediately to mind.
I didn't mean to catch you flat-footed, because I had a friend that caught me this weekend, and I appreciate your time on this.
Dr. Sobchitz.
I would like to catch you flat-footed, so, you mentioned Capers.
Yeah.
And so, there'll be a committee meeting on Capers, I'm sure there's a lot of people in this room who are interested about that. What exactly will the agenda be? Do you have any ideas?
I don't know what the agenda will be, and we don't know what the date will be either, and I should have mentioned that about all of the meetings, they've just recently appointed the subject matters and the committees, leadership is still in the process of appointing the legislators who will serve on those interim committees, we don't know yet what that will be, what the actual topics will be, the fact that they're only meeting one day gives us some glimpse into, it will not be very in-depth.
Another question, the committee chairmanships, I should know this by now, when are they settled?
For the interim committees?
No, for the next session.
So, what will happen is, the first week or so in December, all legislators will come to Topeka, or at least the House, well, I think the Senate comes at the same time, it's been four years since we've done that, I'll have to refresh my memory, but they will come to Topeka, and they have a balloting process where they get together with their individual caucuses in each chamber, and elect leadership within their own ranks. And it can take quite a while, especially for the House, when you have several people who might be running for the various positions that are available, and you continue to have runoffs until you get to.
So, if you were vice chair last session, you have, I mean, you start from scratch, you're not going to be elected chair.
Well, the committee chairmanships are then appointed at a later date by leadership, and so we have to fill the legislative leadership positions first, and then at some point prior to the legislature convening in January, the committee leadership posts will have been appointed by House and/or Senate leadership.
Any other questions for Mr. Carter? Thank you, look forward to next month's report, be a little more clarity, probably after the August 2 primary. Before we move on to the next agenda item, I did want to mention something that was posted this week about the community college. Kansas Policy Institute had issued a Kansas Open Records Act request, seeking information about compensation pay for Johnson County Community College employees, and posted a piece about that. I want to first say, I'm disappointed, not that the information was out there, but it's clearly time to be part of the political election crazy season. There was also an implication in there that it's now available, and I just want to make sure everybody in this room knows that, but the public knows, this information is always available, it is always a public record, it is always voted on as part of the board package in this board, subject to public notice and public comment and public hearing. It is, our master agreement with our faculty is an open record document that is negotiated, in this case, we've had three-year agreements now for the last couple of times. So, this information is out there, and if you are truly interested, anybody watching in accurate and complete information about the college, I would urge you to contact one of the members of the board, or President Sobchitz, or his staff. For example, there was one piece in that post that indicated that 38.5% of our revenues are from student tuition. It caught me off-guard because that's not the number we have ever used, and when you traced back to where that information supposedly came from, from our fiscal year 2015 audited financial statement, that was the dollar amount of tuition, $38.5 million. The actual percentage is 19.3%, so it was off by a factor of 100%. So, I just want to encourage people, we don't have any problem with you asking questions of this board or this college about public records or public information. If you read things about the college you don't understand or wonder what's going on, please contact one of your countywide elected officials that serve on this board, or contact the administration to get the information. I think it's important that voters have all that information, but that they have it accurately and completely. Next item on our agenda is the committee reports, we'll start with Human Resources, trustee Ingram.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Human Resources did not meet this month, we will meet on Monday, August 1, at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you. Learning Quality, trustee Cross.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Learning Quality did not meet this month, we will meet next month on August 1, at 8 a.m. in this room.
I know that the management committee met and did lots of stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, we did meet on Wednesday, July 6, trustees present were Cross and Lindstrom along with several staff members, and we did have a very, very busy meeting. It started with Dr. Sheila Mopin giving information relating to the agreement with Sendgauge Learning, Inc. for College Now programs, basically dealing with codes, software codes that are used in chemistry and political science for College Now courses, obviously, in lieu of textbooks, and that whole agreement can be found in the consent agenda, and we will not visit more about that now, but again, another example of how technology is impacting the teaching, learning, distribution exchange. Dr. Terry Murphy-Latta, Director of our Community College National Academy of Railroad Sciences, known as NARS, reviewed program agreements between NARS and two outside institutions, those outside institutions are Washburn Institute of Technology and Montana State University. We had some very interesting discussion about why Montana State University would come to us, and the fact of the matter is that our program is so highly regarded nationally that, they have a need in that part of Montana to provide training, and so we have a certifying and license agreement with them through our NARS program, and compliments to Dr. Terry Murphy-Latta and all of our team with our BNSF program and the National Academy of Railroad Sciences. We have two recommendations for you, one is for Washburn and one is for Montana State, I think they're very similar, so unless you object, Mr. Chair, I'd like to combine those two into one motion, because they are very similar, just with two different institutions. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to ratify and approve the NARS certified training program in agreement with Washburn Institute of Technology, to certify the Washburn Institute of Technology Railroad Training Program, and also with Montana State University Northern to certify the Montana State University Northern Railroad Training Program, both being certified as NARS certified programs, and I'll make that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to accept those two agreements, is there any discussion? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
I was a yes, I just was, I was mimicking you.[1777.41][1777.41](laughter)
I fairly ignored you because I said it was unanimous anyway.
It was unanimous.
I would ask the chair to get emotional control of our trustees and their vote, I know it's an exciting time, trustee Lindstrom. You heard from Tom Clayton earlier this evening, but Tom Clayton then gave us a report on our insurance risk management. You heard from Tom Clayton earlier this evening, but Tom Clayton then gave us a, a report on our insurance risk management, and presented information regarding our workers' compensation and property insurance programs. He reported that our premium for workers' compensation for fiscal year 217 is approximately eighty-eight thousand two eighty-eight. I guess that's pretty certain. Voter insurance estimated premium is two thousand nine thirty-seven, and the premium for property insurance is one hundred fifty-seven thousand two twenty-four. I would like to point out that we had discussion, and we're really pleased that our premiums have been either stable or somewhat less. And we, we had a nice discussion between the efforts of our human resource department and our insurance folks on the whole issue of work safety, and wanted to point that out, that I think the efforts we're making on, on safe working environments as it relates to workers' compensation, and obviously, how we upkeep our property, on our property insurance, our staff in all those areas is to be commended, and so, we appreciated that very much. Dr. Larson presented information on proposed updates to our infectious disease policy. Basically, brings up to, there's quite a, a current concern as, as we watch the media about certain diseases coming into the country, or that are in the country. And basically, the policy changes you see under policy four-two-four-point-oh-five-six-now-one-one-point-zero-zero have to do with how we've aligned our resources with our state and national and local agencies dealing with infectious diseases. And the approach is to have broader communication to all of our campus personnel, college employees, as it relates to infectious disease. And the policy updates specify what those changes and what those working relationships are. So therefore, it is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the revisions to the infectious disease policy, as is shown subsequently in your board packet. And I think tho, all those changes are on pages two through four, five in your, in your board packet, and I'd make that motion.
Been moved and seconded to accept the policy changes for infectious diseases. Are there any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no? Motion carries unanimously.
Next item was receipt and deposit of funds policy. Updates to the receipt and deposit of funds policy was presented by Dr. Larson. The proposed updates include minor language revisions for consistency with repeat and deposits of our funds operating procedures, which is simultaneously, simultaneously being revised to bring it up to date with current college practices and terminology. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the revisions to the receipt and deposit of funds policy, as shown subsequently in the board packet, and I would make that motion.
Been moved and seconded to accept that, that new policy on receipt and deposit of funds. Any questions or any discussion? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no? Motion carries unanimously.
It's the time of the year. We approve the working agenda for the 2016, 2017 year. That agenda is found on page six, on pages six and seven of your agenda. It is the recommendation, and I don't believe there are many changes from previous years, but we point out the steps we take each month in working with particularly budget process, but all management-related activities. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees approve the two fiscal year 2016-17 management committee working agenda, as found in your packet, and I'll make that motion.
Moved and seconded to accept the management committee working agenda. Are there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no? Motion carries unanimously.
Next item is the next step in our budget process. Ms. Rachel Leers stated that the notice of public hearing form will soon be completed for our fiscal 2016-17 budget. After approval by the Board of Trustees, it will be published as prescribed by state statute. After the public hearing is held in August, the budget will be filed with the county and the state, and based on assessed valuation increases in Johnson County, Johnson County Community College's adopted budget would be subject to the notice of vote provisions. Again, this is one of the many steps we take in a prolonged series of steps in building, in building our budget. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to authorize the publication of the public, notice of public hearing form for the 2016-2017 budget, subject to adjustment as actual expenditure figures are available. Furthermore, it is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to authorize the publication of the notice of vote at a later date, and I'll make that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the notice of public hearing on the 2016-17 budget, and to publish that budget summary as required by state law.
And Mr. Chair, I would, I would point out that that, that hearing will be at our August board meeting on August 18th.
August 18th, five o'clock. If anybody wants to get in line at the podium to talk about our budget, please, anybody in the public is welcome to come and participate in the public hearing. Any questions about the notice of publication and the, the budget? If not, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no? Motion carries unanimously.
Next item relates to banking services, and as we have different players in different positions, this is a signature authority. You have that detail in your packet. Lee Cross has become treasurer, and so, that name change is made along with Mr. Musil, Dr. Sopchak, and Dr. Larson. It is a recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to designate the aforementioned individuals as authorized signers for the college's federal Perkins loan account. And I believe the next one, I suppose we should, can we do with them together, or do you want to do them separate, Barbara?
I think together is...
The, the, Mr. Chair, can we do them together? The second recommendation is the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to designate the aforementioned individuals as authorized signers for the college's deposit accounts. And I would make that motion.
Moved and seconded.
Chair?
Yes, trustee Cross?
Nuck-pro-tunk motion, if I may, is just to, commonly, I've gone by Lee Cross. My mother chose that name as a compromise with my father. Formerly, I am Gerald Lee Cross Jr. If I could just request the change to reflect the formal and proper name that I never actually went by until I became an attorney, but...
Think we can reflect that in the minutes.
No real objection to this motion, just...
And these are done because we have a new treasurer. I think that's the only position to change, but trustee Cross now needs to be a signature on those, on those two items, so that's why this is before us. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no? Motion carried.
The ex, the next item really deals with a change in procedure for years, and I think we go back probably, well, several years at least, where the college has had the chairman of the board sign the weekly cash disbursement report. And I had the privilege of serving as chair for a couple of years, and I kind of always wondered what, you know, because those cash dispersments each week can be quite thick. And so, we go through, we go through those and try and make some sense out of validating and making sure as a board chair that they're proper. However, we have so many, we have so many steps in place, and being there is no specific statute that requires a trustee to sign off on weekly cash dispersments, we know, we've talked about what's, what's the purpose for that. And I would remind the public that we have several checks and balances when we process payments. They're noted in the board packet. I would just like to, just to share them for the general public. All cash dispersments are authorized by the Board of Trustees through approval of the annual budget, first of all. Secondly, delegation of disbursement authority is made to the Assistant Vice President for Financial Services, the Chief Financial Officer, and the Executive Vice President for Finance and Administrative Services pursuant to our board policy two-ten-point-oh-four. So, we have an internal checks and balance with several different people in the administrative staff. Thirdly, subsequent board ratification of the monthly cash dispersments occurs as part of the cash disbursement summary report, included in the treasurer's report portion of the monthly board packet. And finally, contracts are approved by the Board of Trustees in accordance with state statutes. So, we have several steps by following state statute to make sure that all of our funds are properly dispersed and accounted for. And so, removing the trustee signature once a month doesn't interfere or add to that, that several-step process. But what it does add is to the inefficiency of distributing a payment to our vendors. And so, the management committee had discussion about that. It's, it's kind of one of those things that, well, why do you do that? And the answer is, well, we've been doing it for years, but we really don't need to have that step. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to discontinue the practice of requiring a member of the Board of Trustees to sign the weekly cash disbursement report prior to mailing check dispersments, and I'll make that motion.
Been moved and seconded to remove the requirement of a trustee to sign the weekly cash dispersments report. I will note that I've been doing it since I've been chair, and it was converted to at least a computer, secure computer version. But as trustee Cook knows, as I guess the only one here that's served as chair, it is not fun to go through this week's was eighty-seven pages of individual checks with the payee and an amount, and that was it. And I'm supposed to feel like I am doing something good for the college by determining whether the twelve-dollar and eighty-five-cent check was properly issued, or last, I think a couple of weeks ago, we paid Blue Cross Blue Shield six-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars. And it really does not add to our internal controls. It doesn't add anything to our audit protections, and it seems like an antiquated process. So, I really appreciate Barbara, you, and I think Tanya worked on this to see if there was some requirement that we needed to do it legally. And I think this will make a more efficient process and will not have any effect on whether or not we're carefully watching our cash. So, I very much appreciate this, and I will miss it desperately on Wednesdays when I get the thirty-to-hundred-page computer spreadsheet that I click through, at least to look at them to see if there's something weird. So, any other discussion? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no? Motion carries unanimously.
Next item is the corporate card service agreement for procurement card program with Bank of America. Mr. Borch has reported in, in reference to requests for proposals. Board of Trustees approved the establishment agreement with Bank of America for college's procurement card program. The college administration has negotiated such an agreement with, with Bank of America, which includes recommended modifications to the state Kansas Department of Administration contractual provisions attachment, which is required by statute. And so, the approval of this form is required by statute for board approval. It is a recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the modifications of the state of Kansas Department of Administration contractual provisions attachment, Form DA-146A, for the corporate card service agreement with Bank of America, North America, and I'll make that motion.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussions about this arrangement? If not, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no? Motion carried unanimously.
Next item is a contract for roofing repairs on eleven buildings. They're identified, that, that work is identified in your board packet. We had twenty-nine bidders notified. Six responded. You see those bid results in your board packet. And again, each bid was under review by a very distinguished committee, as we always do. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid of one-hundred-eighty-seven-thousand-six-hundred-twenty dollars from Cornell Roofing and Sheet Metal Company, plus an additional eighteen-thousand-seven-hundred-sixty-two dollars to allow for contingencies for possible unforeseen costs for a total expenditure not to exceed two-hundred-six-thousand-three-hundred-eighty-two dollars for roof repairs, and I'll make that motion.
Moved and seconded to accept the bid for roof replacement. Any questions? If not, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no? That motion is carried unanimously.
Next item is a bid for the annual contract for athletic apparel, gear, and equipment. We had five bidders. You see the results of those bids. Again, same process. You will see the notation that we have not accepted the low bidder and the justification for that. I think the staff felt that reviewing the ranking of the written proposals, it included the lead brand offer discounts off list retail incentive rebate programs and, and customer service. And at the conclusion of the evaluation process, it was determined that the proposal submitted by BSN and Sports would best meet the needs of the college based on the criteria mentioned within the RFP. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposal from BSN Sports for the establishment of an annual contract for athletic apparel, gear, and equipment in a total not to exceed one-hundred-thousand dollars, and I'll make that motion.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion, or are there any questions? If not, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no? Motion carried unanimously.
We had our normal review from Mitch Borchers and Rex on work process and bids that didn't meet the requirement. We had really the, the amount of money that would need to go to bid. We had quite an extensive report on our technology infrastructure program. You see that detail in your board packets. I thought it was really interesting to talk about what percent is going to maintenance and replacement, what's going to security and fiber, and, and what is being contributed to new functionality. And you will see just detailed descriptions of each in your board packet under each of those, new functionalities, network, horse, security, fiber, and infrastructure maintenance. And, and then you have some notations on security updates. And again, I, I think the management committee, they can, they can speak for themselves, but I think we're really pleased that we have such a team in place that's taking care of our infrastructure and keeping it up to speed. I guess the next item is the the management budget. No, I'm sorry. That's, that's old business. So, I think that concludes my report, and we had a lot of items. Sorry that I got misplaced there as I got into last month's minutes. That concludes our report, Mr. Chair.
Any questions for the members of the management committee? If not, I think this, I want to thank trustee Cook, trustee Lindstrom, and trustee Cross, because the management committee has a heavy load every month, and this is just an indication of the number of serious items that come before those. Some are just plumbing, like the bank's cards, and some of them are very serious, like roof repairs and the other items you mentioned, Jerry, so thank you for...
Mr. Chair, if I might, and again, for the benefit of the public, I, I know that it sounds like we go through a lot of motions and some serious dollars each month. And I, I also appreciate the work of fellow trustees, but, but we have such dedicated staff in each of our departments. And, and we, we put them through some pretty tough questions at times in those management committee meetings. But I want the public to be assured that we have a high degree of confidence of, of all of our departments and the work that they do. And you see evidence of that when they're recognized by outside agencies outside of the college, which you observed tonight earlier in our, in our board meeting. So, I just want to congratulate our staff and the great work they do in all departments. Thank you.
Agreed. We'll ready now for the treasurer's report. Treasurer, trustee Cross?
Thank you, Mr. Trustee Chair Musil. The treasurer's report can be found beginning on page thirty-one of your board packet. It's page thirty-three of the PDF. And the board packet contains the treasurer's report for the month ended May 31st, 2016. Some items of note include, at page one, the treasurer's report is the general post-secondary technical education fund summary, and as of May 31st, ninety-two percent of the college's fiscal year had expired. The college's unencumbered cash balance as of May 31st, 2016 in all funds was seventy-one million, seventy-one point two million, which is approximately seven point seven million higher than at the same time last year. During the month of May, the college made scheduled semi-annual interest payments on Series 2011 revenue bonds, Series 2012 revenue bonds, and Series 2015 revenue bonds. These payments totaled two-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars, and are reflected in the plant funds section of this month's treasurer's report. An ad valorem tax distribution of thirty-four point eight million was received from the county treasurer during the month of June, and will be included in next month's report. Expenditures in the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits. And, Mr. Chair, it is therefore the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the treasurer's report for the month ended May 31st, 2016, subject to audit.
Been moved and seconded to accept the treasurer's report. Questions for our new treasurer? We'll try not to test you too much today, or you can defer to...
No, I'd just like to say that all the changes on anything happened prior to me coming into...
You've done a wonderful job.
And also, to thank Ms. Rachel Leers for her help and assistance in preparing this report.
So, anything that's wrong is trustee Lindstrom's on his watch, right, his prior treasurer?
That was a joke, just so the public knew.
All those in favor of the motions signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Oppose no? Motion carried. Thank you, Lee. President's report. Dr. Sopchak?
Thank you, trustee Musil. We're going to get started and kick this off with a little lightning round. So, Dr. Korb?
Okay. Well, I was going through my notes, looking for an appropriate thing to present in lightning round. And I came across a story that I thought would be of interest to you. And it, it goes back to the extra efforts awards that we do, and we've, we've talked about staff and some of the, the cool things that our staff do. cool things that our staff do. And I know that we have mentioned the Extra Efforts Awards before, but we actually gave out forty-seven of those awards this year, and it's an opportunity for people to recognize their fellow staff members for things that they do that they've gone above and beyond. And I'm always intrigued when I go to one of these little ceremonies because people do some small, tiny little things, and then some things that seem much bigger. But the interesting thing about it is that even those tiny little things that people do and they are recognized for made a huge difference for someone else. So, I'm talking about, this can be, they helped me get a room set up. You know, I walked in and my room wasn't set up, and something was about to start, and somebody stepped in. It wasn't their job, and they did that. Okay, but the story that I want to tell you is actually not one of those awards. It's different than that, but it would fit really nicely in that category, and it is a good example of the type of thing that we hear. So, we had a student who was having a particularly difficult problem, was really at her wits' end trying to navigate just through a process and a problem that she was having, and really there was a fairly large barrier to her success. And she had done what she could to try to navigate through it. A couple of staff members had made an attempt to try to help as well. There was a timing issue with it, and there was something that she needed in order to be able to complete a project. She was in an internship, and it was really important that it happened and be resolved right away. It didn't look like that was going to happen. So, we had a staff member who drove to Best Buy, bought a product that this student needed that was a software product, spent his own money, came back, gave that to the student. She was able to go ahead, finish the project, and she actually was working in an internship for a company. That company has now offered her a job. And this person that did this would not want me to mention their name, did not want to be reimbursed for what they had done, but went truly above and beyond to remove a barrier for one of our students so that they could be successful. And I think that was probably a fairly significant event for this particular student. So, I just, and it wasn't one of the things that came up in the Extra Efforts, but this is the kind of thing that we hear over and over when we hand out those awards in that ceremony. So, forty-seven of those were given this last fiscal year.
Great.
Isn't that awesome?
That's a good report. I like that.
Yeah.
It happens a lot, I know.
It does. That's just one example, but it does happen a lot.
Thank you, Judy. Barbara?
Thank you. By now, everyone has heard about or played Pokemon Go. I'm really impressed with how the college has responded to this phenomenon with an opportunity for student engagement. Student Life has conducted group tours as well as drop-in tours. In the last several weeks, they've provided maps of the poke spots on campus. Today, Student Life put out refreshments to help players beat the heat. We've received some positive media coverage, as many people know, and I think it's fair to say that we've had hundreds of individuals on campus that may not have come to our campus otherwise. At the same time, our police department, particularly the officers working midnight shifts, have used their community policing training to politely let people know that the campus officially closes at eleven P.M. Our peak night so far was this past Saturday night, when thirty-five people were identified on campus between approximately one and three A.M. There have been no incidents when people have been asked to leave the campus, and I thank the professionalism of our police officers for their response to this new campus activity. Thank you.
Barbara, do we know how many Pokemon sites are on campus?
It looks, I would say there's more than twenty-five.
There's thirty.
There's thirty. Thank you.
So, what have you been doing your first week?
I wish it was me, but it wasn't.
Why do we have sites? Why are there Pokemon sites, man?
That's where you can find them, right?
Yes, because the company, help me, somebody.
Jump in there.
I have, please.
My children are all tech heads, and so, the reason why is because the company that designed the game actually had a previous game that was designed to get hackers to find works of art, and so they overlaid the Pokemon map over the old map for their old game. So, every work of art on the exterior part of campus actually has some function inside the Pokemon game. And the reason that there's people here at one to three in the morning is you can only find the ghost Pokemon at night, so...
And that is the type of insight we'll be getting from Mr. McLeod, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara. Nikki?
I have enjoyed the first few weeks. I've had an opportunity to meet many wonderful faculty members. The English department actually endured several of my bad jokes during a luncheon yesterday as they got the opportunity to meet me, and we've kind of started to lay out some of our priorities. It looks like one of the big things that we'll be doing is a little bit of reorganization. I'm a little old-fashioned in my approach to academics, and I like when faculty are able to cluster in groups that have similar understandings and skill sets. And some of our divisions right now confuse me just a little bit in terms of which skill sets are next to which other skill sets, and so there'll probably be a small reorganization of our academic units so that we have some commonality amongst the skills of the faculty as they meet in those places. I will also say that I have enjoyed being here during the burgeoning Pokemon movement because apparently outside my office is the nexus of about five Pokemon stops, so I get to enjoy watching people outside my window all day while I try to get some work done. That's been really fun, particularly when the softball team showed up with their coach in tow, everybody in uniform with their phones out.
That's great. Thanks, Nikki. We're going to do something a little bit different tonight. I'd like to invite, this past week, Trustee Sandate and I participated in a Latina leadership, I guess you could say, seminar. And Henry, it was great that you were there. If you could say a few words about that, that'd be super.
Sure. Well, it was really, I mean, it was a pleasant experience. This is a new organization. It's been around about, I think, nine months is what they told me, and I think they have about thirty-five to forty members. They're all Johnson County residents, Latina heritage, and created the organization to develop leadership skills and common ground and sharing support. And one thing they do is, on a monthly basis, is seek out institutions, business and higher education to visit and find out more about what's available and what the institutions are doing to create leadership in regards to Latinos or Latinos as well. But the whole intent is, I think, is exposure, which is a great thing, and we had a wonderful opportunity for about, I think it seemed about a couple of hours actually, to entertain but also engage in the auditorium and Hudson Auditorium and make our presentation about what our institution's all about in higher education and how we definitely have a welcoming personality to the Latino community and our interest there and how we intend to grow in that segment. So, it was a wonderful experience, and we're all able to share the story about Johnson County Community College and our significance in Johnson County.
That's great. Thank you, Trustee Sandate. And you were a rock star, by the way.
Well, thank you.
They loved you, so it was a lot of fun. I've got a few things to add on the president's report. You have the monthly report to the board right here. It's twenty-three pages. Just a few of the highlights, and I'm going to go from back to front. On page twenty-one, Counseling, Recruitment, and Success Center. Now, what's interesting about this report is the succinctness and the clarity of showing what's going on with regards to the amount of activity. If you look at the counseling center, you'll see an increased number of counseling sessions that are conducted by our counselors. That has grown every year for the past several years. This is so important for us when it comes to enrollment and retention, and it's great to see that engagement and the success that's going on over there. The recruitment, there is a range of campus visits, from Andover to Appleton City to Lawrence Free State to Wasion High School. Our folks are out there hitting high schools all over the region and the state. And lastly, our success center, the face-to-face contacts, emails, the online, just the mere volume of that is so impressive as Student Services is really working hard to, again, address enrollment and retention, so we're thrilled with that. Athletics on page nineteen. And you have to realize there are so many things that are featured in those twenty-three pages. I'm just picking out a very small number of the highlights. The National Junior College Athletic Association released its two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen Academic Student-Athlete Awards. Our college had a record of forty-six student athletes who've earned that distinction this past year. To do that, you have to have a three-point-six GPA. So, imagine carrying the coursework and the load of participating at collegiate-level athletics and performing in the classroom to that extent. That is a tremendous compliment to our athletic department, coaching staff, counselors, faculty, and the entire campus community. Everyone here shares in their success. Also, kudos to Tyler Kundoff. Tyler, of course, is our college sports information director. He recently earned twelve awards, twelve awards for writing and publications at the College Sports Information Directors of the America, the convention in Dallas. His twelve awards were eclipsed by only one school. Does anyone know what school had more awards than Tyler?
A-State. Probably has a golden dome somewhere.
No, it's Kansas State. You must have read the report prior to the meeting.
I read the report.
That's good. Kansas State had thirteen awards, so...
So, it's expected.
Our honors, the humility is overwhelming. The honors program had a twenty-seven percent increase in honor contracts for the summer of two thousand and sixteen, that's versus a year ago, and our hours have increased nine percent. Kudos to Anna Page. And our business administration program, we have to give credit to our business faculty who have worked very hard to further refine our business online course offerings in an attempt to increase enrollment and completion opportunities for our students. Now, all currently required business courses are offered online, and each business online course is offered in both an eight-week and a sixteen-week format. And what a terrific opportunity for students to be able to take advantage of the flexibility and get the quality online course from Johnson County. In the future, they're looking at some other areas, additional curriculum opportunities based on local, regional, industry demand, and also the development of a business division guided academic pathway. So, that's terrific to see that happening in our business department. I'd like to recognize Jay Glatz for receiving a sustainability award. Jay is the leader of our catering, in-house catering services. He won an award from the NACUFS, which is the National Association of College and University Food Services. We were the only community college recognized by this national organization. There were only nine awards given. We won a bronze in waste management. Some of the other schools, the gold medal winner was Princeton University, silver was Colorado State University, and then recipients of other awards were Brown University, University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign, Harvard University, University of Massachusetts, Hammerhurst, and University of Massachusetts at Dartmouth. So, that's competing in some pretty select company at the national level. So, our hats off to Jay, as well as to our sustainability department under Jay Antle, who continue to provide us with opportunities to bring notoriety to our college on the national stage, so thank you. I want to briefly talk about Vinnie Pastella. Vinnie is a member of our Veterans Services Program. He works up in the Veterans Office. And Vinnie scheduled an appointment to come in, and these are the types of opportunities that you all don't receive with the frequency that we do. And Judy talked about some of the experiences with regards to the Extra Effort Awards. Vinnie comes by, and he invited me to run in a 5K that honors the life of Spencer C. Duncan. And this 5K is going to be at seven-thirty A.M. on Saturday, August sixth, at the Navy Park at New Century Air Center in Olathe. Spencer Duncan was an Olathe High School graduate who was killed in action in Afghanistan during Operation Enduring Freedom in two thousand and eleven. He was an Army door gunner in a Chinook helicopter. His parents, who are amazing people, Dale and Megan Spencer, have responded to this family tragedy in a constructive manner as they memorialize their son by raising money for scholarships. Last year, they raised eighty-thousand dollars. Obviously, the 5K is a part of that. All these proceeds go to organizations like ours. The Spencers have been to our college, they've spoken. We award a scholarship in Spencer Duncan's honor. Now, Vinnie, to go back to Vinnie Pastella, he also served in Afghanistan. And he was very clear when he came into the office that he had attended some other educational institutions, some other community colleges that are highly ranked, in fact, what we would might consider a peer institution. And he talked about how Johnson County Community College is heads and tails above the opportunity that he had at this other community college and the incredible impact that this college and the people who've worked here has made in his life. He claimed he was far and away better than any educational institution he has ever attended. And I'll tell you, this is unusual when I have the opportunity to interact with students and families. This college has this impact because of the opportunities that you, as trustees, provide us. But most importantly, it's because of the incredible professionals who we have that work here every single day and who are committed to student success. So, I want to thank you for giving us the tools to inspire all of us on this campus, to inspire learning, transform lives, and to strengthen communities. So, that's the report for tonight. Thank you.
Very positive, all the way around. Anybody have any questions or comments? Trustee Lindstrom?
I have a comment on the Make It Count Foundation. I've gotten to know Dale and Megan, and the chief's ambassadors are involved in that project out there, and it's, I would encourage anyone to take the opportunity to go out there. It's pretty magnificent what they're doing, and it just gets hot even in the morning. But they have a great crowd that run in the race, and they have all kinds of things going on. It's a nice place to bring kids, and it's a lot of fun.
And you know, what's really remarkable, instead of seething in anger and frustration that we see so much of today, they're out there trying to do something positive and constructed, and constructive, that will help others, help others succeed in their lives. So, they're a wonderful family.
Yeah. Great. Thank you. That ought to be a good place to end, but unfortunately, we can't. We have more stuff to do. And I shouldn't lead into Dennis that way. It's time for our faculty association president. That will be just as uplifting. Dennis, I apologize for that. Thank you for coming and giving us a report from the Faculty Association.
Okay, well, thank you again for giving me an opportunity to speak. Since it is the middle of the summer, it's been pretty quiet in the world of the association. We have not been meeting over the summer. But one thing we do at the beginning of the summer is get together the executive council and talk about what we're going to be focusing on in the upcoming year, so I thought I'd take this opportunity to just kind of highlight a few of the things that we are thinking about and talking about and will be looking at in the upcoming year. I don't think any of this will be too much of a surprise. A lot of this is carryover from matters we've been talking about in the previous year. So, we are, of course, part of the same social and political world as everybody else, so we are paying very close attention to the upcoming elections and hoping for a legislature that will be supportive of higher education. Some more specific things tied to that, we are getting closer. We are within the year of the expiration of the exemption for the concealed carry, and we will be continuing to follow very closely discussions happening with the COPS Committee about how the college will respond to that. I look forward to working with my counterparts in the Faculty Senate and Educational Affairs to continue faculty dialogue on that with the administration amongst ourselves. We are also getting closer to the college going through the accreditation process and the Higher Learning Commission requirement for people to be certified is going to be something we're watching. I think we had a lot of very good discussions about that in the last year, and we have a good procedure in place, but this will impact some full-time faculties, so we will be involved with that as well. Other than that, this is the time of the summer. We start to look forward to getting back in the classroom, actually, and seeing students and doing what we do, so we're looking forward to a good year.
Great.
Off with that.
Any questions for Dr. Arjo?
Thanks.
Thank you. We'll look forward to seeing you in August, and by that meeting, we will be right before students show up on campus. It will be here. Thank you. Next report is on the Johnson County Education Research Triangle. Trustee Lindstrom?
This is a very brief report because we have not had a meeting. Jay Cert has not met since our last meeting. The next meeting, however, is September twentieth, and it will be at the KU Edwards Campus, and I'll have a report after that meeting.
Thank you. Dr. Cook, Kansas Association of Community College Trustees.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. KACC has not met since our last meeting. I believe our next meeting is upcoming in September, and I do believe... I believe our next meeting is upcoming in September, and I do believe, Mr. Chair, we will have discussion and response to the faculty regarding your concern. We appreciate that. That'll be forthcoming. I would like to report, though, on ACCt. I had the privilege of attending the board retreat last week in San Antonio. Roberto Zararte is the president of ACCt and on the San Antonio Community College Board, Alamo Community College, and did a wonderful job hosting us there. You know, we wonder why do we participate, and I visited with Dr. Sobchak the other day about this, and I think Trustee Cross referenced this when he attended the Oregon Campus Security Summit. You know, I come out of those meetings thinking, you know, maybe two or three things happened to me, and one is the validation or the quantification of how successful this college is, because when I have the chance to visit, and I'll remind the public that there are twenty-six board members nationally from five different regions, and each region has three representatives plus some at-large representatives, and so in the Western Region, Roberto Zararte is from Texas, Kent Miller's from Nebraska, and I represent Kansas, and I represent the Western Region as chair. But it's interesting to hear the dialogue of the issues and concerns of the community colleges, about twelve hundred of them across the country. And I just really come back feeling really good about the commitment that the team at Johnson County Community College has from custodians all the way to the president, and we all should feel very good about that. We hear reports that validate that. The second issue that I come back with is the opportunity to pick up some new ideas and some new concepts, and what could we add? And then, thirdly, how can we become better at what it is we do? And this retreat really had to deal with what's the relevance of ACCt, which made me think of what's my relevance on this Board of Trustees and what's our individual relevance in serving our students, and what's the college's relevance to its community? And so at ACCt, we believe we have six core values, and I'm so pleased, Dr. Sobchak, that you could cite right off the top of your head, our mission of inspiring students to transform lives, to strengthen communities. We're struggling a little bit with that at ACCt because I frankly think our mission is too long. But we have six core values that we're trying to get all of our twenty-six trustees to be able to respond to simultaneously. It's boardsmanship, how can we all become better board members at our local colleges and at the national level? Advocacy, not just federal and state advocacy, but do our trustees have in their back pocket awareness of three or four programs where when out in the community, they can advocate the strength of those communities with the citizens of their community? Do we have four or five out of forty-seven Above and Beyond stories of student success that we can represent? So advocacy, to me, is more than just federal government and state government, but it's the idea of advocating the significance of community college as it helps young people transform their lives. And then student success is kind of the core of our value system. That's what we're here for. How can we help students of all ages, of all needs, of all financial situations improve themselves? And I want to come back to an example at Alamo Community College. And then we deal with innovation, and we belong to the League of Innovation, so again, you know, it's pretty exciting to know that we're not just sitting still. We're trying to shift this aircraft carrier as trends change and as teaching and learning distribution opportunities change. And then diversity. How do we represent our community, and does the college have a role to lead the diversity culture and understand? And so diversity is a real big key for ACCt. And then the sixth one is, what service do we provide to the community? And you hear report after report after report of how this college provides services to the community. Karen's report tonight with the awards and so on and so forth, just in workforce development. And so we try to overlay that. We try to say to colleges, ACCt is relevant because we have these six core values, and how does your college overlay with your mission our key performance indicators? How do they fit in? And then what kind of support can we get? So we spent a whole day Friday in retreat from eight till eight at night. Liz Murphy of Campus Works did a fabulous job of pulling together what we think we're about and how we can strengthen our mission and our core value statement. And then we spent part of Saturday with feedback from her. She came back with a one-page fabulous, it was one of the best retreats I've sat in in terms of condensing your thought into some kind of next-step action. So I won't bore you with all of that, but it was a very fabulous retreat, and it was a good opportunity. And then I think another outcome that comes out of that is it gives us an opportunity to position Johnson County Community College in the nation, because without fail, they will say, what are you doing at your college? What kind of programs do you do in this regard? And so that's why I think all of us as trustees need to do some homework on having those thirty-second, those ten-second elevator speeches about knowledge about some of our programs, because we're perceived across the country as being a really fine community college. The idea that got me excited, one night, we had a reception at the Skobe Planetarium and Space Center. And if you'll recall, the Columbia space mission was not a very successful one. It's the one when Christy McAuliffe, the teacher, and others were going into outer space, and it was a catastrophic event that brought our whole space program kind of to a halt at that period of time. But astronaut Skobe was from San Antonio, and his family donated a lot of money to this Mission Control Space Center and Planetarium. And last week, they had three hundred fifty elementary, well, actually, they start at age four, and they bring students in age four, five, and six, boys and girls, all the way through eighteen. And it was just a fabulous experience. We got a little taste of what it would like to sit in a space shuttle, and we got a little taste of what it means to be in Mission Control, and we got a little taste of how students are given all of this electronic equipment, and then they're to put, they're supposed to fix the problem in the space shuttle with all of these components. And if it doesn't work, red signals come, alert, 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 and you've got so many seconds to make a change, and it's just fun seeing how kids, given the opportunity to work with one another and teach and learn, can be effective. So I came back, and I said, gee whiz, it'd be fun to have a planetarium and a space Mission Control on our campus. There's a lot of talk about Promise Now and tuition-free education for community college students. Noah Browner, Executive Director, is on the Promise Now Board, and he reminded us that it's not just about the perception we have of President Obama's plan to have community college free. There are over two hundred programs right now in various colleges of where students can go tuition-free. And at San Antonio, our speaker at the reception there was a local businessman. He happened to create some software and sold it, so he made a few dollars. But he came to the college and said, I'm going to write out a check for a million dollars, which he did, and I want this to be for scholarships for students from San Antonio to be committed to a program in a certificate completion program whereby they can be employed in San Antonio, because he had seen where many San Antonio young people were unemployed and there were jobs available. And so he partnered with the college and said, I'll pay their tuition. Here's a million dollars. And so that was pretty bold and courageous on this man and his wife's part, but he's committed to helping young people, people of all ages for that matter, not have the barrier of not being able to go to school because of finance, because he strongly believes education is our way out of poverty. Education is our way out of poverty, and he wants everybody to have a chance. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to take so long, but I gained so much by sharing experiences with these energetic trustees from all over the country. And Roberto Zararte and I hit it off pretty well because he's a former elementary teacher and a former elementary principal, so we have some commonality there. Thank you very much.
You're a former elementary student.
And I'm a former elementary student.
I remember that.
I am.
Thank you. I mean, your service on that National Board is important, I think, to this college, and is obviously something that we're proud to have you do. The next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. We consider the consent agenda at the, I think, Trustee Ingram.
Trustee Ingram found.
It's not on the agenda. That's why I did not make a mistake. I'm sorry.
But I can help you with it.
Trustee Ingram, would you give us a foundation report?
I would be happy to. The officers of the Foundation Executive Committee met Tuesday, July the 12th. The fiscal year seventeen operating budget for the Foundation was approved at this meeting. This budget comes exclusively from a portion of the earnings on Foundation funds. This is not supported by and is separate from the college's general fund. In addition to covering operational expenses for fiscal year seventeen, one hundred fifty-five thousand dollars, which is nearly half of the budget, is directed to scholarships and program support. This will supplement the more than one million dollars the Foundation already awards each year in scholarship funds. Over four hundred fifty thousand dollars has been raised for some Enchanted Evening to date. The gala will be held on November 12, 2016, at the Overland Park Marriott, and I believe we've already discussed that Tom and Chaney Mitchell are the chairs this year, and Reverend Adam Hamilton is being honored as the 2016 Johnson County of the Year. The Foundation is adding two social events to its calendar. The first one will be on August the 25th, 2016, for all the board members, all the board and its members. And other calendar items for fall are the Scholarship Celebration Student Luncheon on Wednesday, September 7 at noon in the Capitol Federal Conference Room, and the Annual Dinner will be Monday, October 10. The location and time will be announced at a later date. So with that, I conclude my report.
I apologize. This wasn't on this.
That's fine.
So I apologize for that. Obviously, the Foundation, we hear a million dollars in scholarships every year. That is a big deal on this campus.
Yes.
Mr. Chair. Trustee Cross.
I haven't served on the Foundation Board. I was liaison in my first half of my first term. Do we still pay Mr. Carter out of the Foundation? Is that still a thing?
That's correct.
Mr. Carter's compensation is split between the Foundation with regards to his activity at the state level and then the general fund with regards to his activity at the federal level.
I really just wanted to see if Mr. Carter was awake. How you doing?
All right. We lost control early. I apologize. We'll now move to the consent agenda, which is a series of routine items. A consensus item is typically considered collectively and approved in a single motion and vote. Any member of the board may remove a particular item from the consent agenda, so it will be considered debated and voted upon separately. Are there any items on the night's consent agenda that any board member would like to remove and address individually? If not, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Some moved. Second.
And moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. We're ready for a motion to adjourn, but before we do that, I want to officially welcome our newest trustee, Henry Sandate, from Shawnee to the first official board meeting. You spoke to the board last month. Thank you for agreeing to serve with us. And Dr. Mickey McLeod, who also was introduced last month, but today is your official first meeting. So thank you very much for joining the Johnson County Community College team. We are ready for a motion to adjourn.
Some moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, do we adjourn? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. We are adjourned.